We'll start with our roll call.
Councilman Duper.
President.
Councilman Papeski.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Perry Leonard.
Here.
Thank you, we do have a quorum.
Okay, we have our invocation and pledge allegiance led by me. Everybody stand.
Lord, Heavenly, thank you for your continued guidance, watch care, and love for us. We pray your blessing here in this meeting as we discuss topics that any of our people say that will come to the proper decisions that are for the best of the people in here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome, Dr. Daly. Okay, are there any items be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, we have one public comment. Mr. Dick Wiley.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, staff. I want to make a very general comment. I got a lot of feedback from the history fair on how beautiful Heritage Park looks now with the turf that was put down and the rock. And I wish you would express that to your staff down there at Corporate Yard. Good job, well done. And it's very nice. It looks good, I can't wait to see the rest of it when that all gets done too. Real nice job.
Thank you. Are there any other comments anybody would like to make? There are no other cards filled out, but feel free to come forward if you want. Nope? Okay. We'll move on to our scheduled items then. We have public hearings, three public hearings from our Public Works Department. Do you want to present them first and then we open the public hearing? Or how would you like to handle that?
Sure, I can present it first. The first item is to adopt a council bill number R-2019 dash twenty-four. Establish the maximum refu collection and disposal rate effective July 1st, 2019. And repeal the resolution number two nine eight three. A little background is we have a contract with the CRNR. Whereas in the contract, we have allowed them to do an annual adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index or CPI. And for next year, they will have an annual increase of 3.05 percent. As part of the Prop 218 requirement, the city sent out 5,100 letters or notice to the resident and the property owner. I wish, as of today, we receive six letter of protest from the resident. And out of 1,516 mail returned to us. So, that's to end my report.
Okay.
Can you give us the general tenor of what the protest letters were?
Just do not raise the rate. Out of 5,100, we have six people that respond.
So it was financial?
Yes.
It wasn't related to the service?
Correct.
You finished?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to take these one at a time? Okay. So...
For item one, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then two and three is the last game assessment district, you want me to open all three? The second one...
Yeah, let's do them separately.
If you want to just...okay, we can go on then. Okay. All right, so we need to open the public hearing then. It is now open for comments. Does anybody have anything they would like to say? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And what is the council's pleasure?
I'll go ahead and move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions or comments?
Just an overall comment. I just want to say that I'm very impressed with CRNR service. And they've done a lot for us as a community and they're moving forward. We had a chance to tour their anabolic digestion facility about a year, year and a half ago. And anyway, just I think we have really good service with them. So, I understand there's always a cost, cost of living that goes up. And so, this is not anything intentional, it's not anything negative, it's just the reality of the world. So, thank you guys for the service that you provide.
I could add sentiment. And just for the record, if anybody wants to know, the trash rate is going to go up by about, looks like a dollar and seven cents a month, something like that, so.
Any other comments or questions, observations? Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Okay, we'll go to public hearing, item number two.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pretend, just before you go on, it's appropriate to announce the action either as part of the motion itself. This was Resolution 2019 dash twenty-four establishing maximum refuse collection disposal rates effective July 1st, 2019.
You did a great job.
My motion reflects what the attorney just clarified.
Okay, item number two.
Yes, sir. This is to approve the landscape assessment district number one for fiscal year nineteen, I mean 2019 and 2020 annual report. So, a little background is on May...it should be May 14, 2019, 2018. The city council took several actions, including initiating, processing the preliminary approval of engineering report. And set for June 11, which is tonight, 2019, for the date of public hearing. And this is for the landscape assessment district. Again, every year we have a little bit of cost of living increase. Which currently we have seventy-six district. But only, but the first fifty district doesn't have any cost escalation, it stayed the same. District number fifty-one to seventy-five have cost escalation. Seventy-six is just a new one, it's occurring, it's the latest one, so it doesn't have one. So, for next fiscal year, our revenue is expect to be four hundred and two thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Which expenditure for next fiscal year is four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. So the difference will come from the general fund. So, that's pretty much in my report.
I had just a couple of questions, clarification. So, are we anticipating an increase in the landscape maintenance costs?
We, for the assessment, we can only increase up to a very small amount.
I see, so you're identifying the fact that the difference will have to be taken out of the general fund, okay.
Or if not, we go back to the order and ask for increase.
I see.
This is a problem that a lot of communities have where you're split, kind of split roles. I don't think that's the correct term. But where some people are locked into a set rate that can never be increased. And so that's where the rub comes is that as newer homes and properties are developed, those folks end up taking more of a lion's share of that cost increase. And the only way we can bring it up is to go to the voters and typically voters don't approve tax increases. So, that means we have to come out of general fund with any of the...
So, if I'm reading your report correctly, there's a difference of about sixty-five thousand dollars here, so, okay.
And as part of the budget that you approved at the last meeting, it does include this cost in the general fund?
It does include, okay, thank you.
I tried to work my way through the staff report. It's pretty dense and I have to confess, I didn't understand most of it. What I know is that in terms of Public Works, and Public Works is probably my favorite department in the city. But man, we've got more weeds in more places and I'm willing to provide you addresses than we've ever had. And I'd like you to reiterate what's happening on the Mountain View eastbound exit and entrance because that looks abominable. And there's, but there's other areas as well. So, I'm seeing an increase, even a deficit, in the amount of money we're going to spend on Public Works to resolve this. But boy, it's, our city is not looking good right now in terms of weeds. So, help me out here.
Yes.
Because I'm saying, I want to help Public Works.
Yes.
If we have to hire another twenty people, let's do it. But our city's looking bad.
Yes. So, thank you to the city council approved the budget at the last city council meeting. So, we now have a contract and with extended contract for adopted highway. So, starting, I think next week, they will come out and start removing the weeds and also...
From your lips to God's ears because I've been waiting.
So, thank you to all of you, you approved the contract, so it's going.
I'm ready to volunteer Ovi Papeski to go out and help pull weeds to make this happen.
And again, next year, when you approve, I'll also increase the contract for the contractor for landscape maintenance with the contractor that we have. So, we're going to have that happen too.
So, on-ramp, off-ramp, that's major. But in front of the Shell station, and I can tell you other places because I've got notes where there's weeds growing up through the pavement.
Yes, and on Mountain View...
So I'm trying to figure out what Public Works is doing.
Yes. It's just a lot of rain this year, so, but we are working on it, we are, we are. I'm out walking every day, doing inspection myself, so, not every day, three days a week.
Yeah. And so, we've got a budget of what, four hundred and whatever thousand dollars?
Yes.
Is that going to resolve or do we need more help?
We are, for next year, we add more to the contractor out of general fund to do more landscape maintenance along Barton Road, median. This LMD, a lot of them are in the homeowner area, which is like the southeast part of town, the southwest part of town, the median, and so those area. But there's still part of the town that, it's not part of LMD, that we have a...
Not part of...
Landscape Assessment District.
Okay. Oh, it's not?
Right, there's some, yes.
So I guess that was my question. Because this only covers, like you said, most of the residential area, some of the newer areas.
Correct.
So, Dr. Daly was talking about what more do we need to, do you think we can allocate if we need to cover areas that perhaps this isn't covered by?
That sounds more like a code issue, right?
No, he's just talking about the street and medians and...
You mentioned the gas station.
That's in the median, in front of the gas station.
Median on Mountain View, in front of the Shell station.
Public property, nothing private.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, I know that it's not necessarily on the agenda, but if it's four hundred thousand dollars that we're allocating for those particular areas, what would you say our budget is to address other landscape issues that are not related to this particular issue? Just out of...
We do have it, but I just don't have it in front of me. We do have a contractor that maintain Barton Road medians. On that, the median on Mountain View, we maintain it ourselves, so I will, you know, get to it.
Would you say that our landscaping services amount to half a million a year, a million?
Do you have numbers? I don't have that number right offhand, no.
Well, we may want to revisit that and if there's something that you need more help with, I think we're, I'm sure we're all be willing to try to address Dr. Daly's concerns. But it sounds, what you're telling me is this new budget that we approved...
Is increase that?
Will increase amounts, so that should help.
I did, we did, yes, we did.
If it doesn't, I guess you'll have to come back and report to us, Dr. Daly.
But we're talking about, but we're talking about a new, I don't know, circle or whatever you call it at Roundabout, right? We're talking about a new entrance at Redlands and Anderson. And if we, if we're not keeping up with what we have now, I want ironclad agreements with Loma Linda Health or a commitment from the city that we're going to make it look good. And, I mean, I'm in the process of letting part of my line, my lawn die out right now so that I can replace it with some other stuff. And so my lawn looks bad. But we, whatever we commit to in terms of landscaping, I want our city to look attractive. And we've got weeds all over the place.
I'm with you because of...
Yeah, yeah, no, and I know you are. But my point in raising the issue now is do, as Councilman Papeski was saying, do we need to commit more resources in order to sustain an attractive community? That's a question. Do we?
I add more to this next fiscal year already, so let's see what happens.
And do we think that'll be enough?
Our budget is pretty small, so I'm trying my best to what we have, pretty this way.
I understand, I understand, okay. All right, let's see what happens. But I would say, I would hope that Public Works makes the main thoroughfares within the city a major priority. And... And again, I don't care who does it. You know, if that means Councilman Duper's out there pulling weeds every Sunday, I'm okay with that, as long as the weeds get pulled.
Can I get community service credit?
Absolutely.
Don't laugh.
I'll sign it off.
The council gets together with other volunteers and do it in Summer, you know, they actually go and work on some of the parks there. So, pretty soon, I guess we'll be doing that if Dr. Daly puts us to work.
And I'm being a little bit of a smart aleck here, but I'm serious about this too. I want our community to look attractive. And I think we have in the past and I think we've been slipping the last couple of years. And if that means we need to put the, the, the city council out hoofing our way around the city to correct it, then so be it. But we need to do something. Okay. So, my support for this is that we believe that the added funding will help address the issues that I've expressed concern about. And if it doesn't work, then we'll revisit it.
Yes, I will be happy to come back at mid-year and see what we need, hire more contractor to help Public Works and do more landscaping and...
With that, I support the motion.
Councilman Daly has volunteered Mr. Papeski for work and Mr. Duper for work. Because I think I'm going to interrupt you and open the public hearing before your eyes look over this way.
Too late.
Too late. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. Would the public like to speak on this issue at all? Hearing none, we'll close. And what is the council's pleasure?
Based on the previous discussion we've had, I would propose support for Council Bill R dash 2019 dash twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Okay. Approving the annual report and assessments for landscape maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2019 and 2020. All right, any more discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, it's carried unanimously. Mr. City Manager, number three, item number three in the public hearing.
Yes, sir, this is regarding the approval of the street light assessment district number one for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Annual report, this is very similar to the landscape assessment district whereas the city council directed the city to prepare the engineering report and authorize the levying of the annual assessment for the next fiscal year, 2019, 2020. For next fiscal year, for the street light, the revenue is three hundred and forty-nine thousand and sixty-eight dollars. Whereas our expenditure is three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred dollars, the difference of, the difference of five thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. And that funding will come from, we have some reserve left in the, in the land, in the street light assessment district that we can spend. Anything over that, we come out of the general fund. So, that's in my report.
Quick question of clarification. Does this amount actually cover the electrical bill for that area?
Majority is electrical bill and the light bulb.
Okay.
Where are we at with the LED conversion?
We probably have about forty, forty-five percent. We still have a lot more to do yet.
My impression is the pink lights that we've had in the city for years are brighter and provide more light than the LED. Am I wrong? I, I mean, you changed the light... Yeah, the light out in front of my house changed and I'm fine with it. And LED is the way to go and I recognize that. But I'm not convinced there's more light, I think there's less light. Yeah, yeah. I would say pink and white, but it's okay. It's all right. I, I support, I move Council Bill R... Oh, public hearing, okay.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Any comments? Three, two, one. Going, going, gone. We'll close the public hearing. And now you may go.
I move Council Bill R dash 2019 dash twenty-six.
I'll second.
To approve the annual report and assessments for the street light benefit assessment district for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Any more comments from councilmen? If not, there's a motion in a second. We'll proceed to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to our consent calendar.
I'll move it.
There's a motion to approve the consent calendar, is there a second?
I will second pulling item seven.
Okay.
Annual tree maintenance services citywide. Help me understand what the, what the process or schedule is for that. I mean, I think we do a good job.
Yes, we do a tree trimming around the city. And again, we have a lot of palm trees, a lot of trees by Beaumont, a lot of old part of town. Daisy, tulip, they have a big trees that we have to routinely trim, so.
And how does this relate to the SCE projects that are occurring?
No, this is independent of that. We do our own, SCE trimmed the trees that underneath the power line. That when it's too high, they'll cut the top.
That's a separate contract.
That's by SCE.
They handle that themselves.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to digress too far, but how close are we to that wrapping up?
SCE? No, there's still a long way to go yet. So you can see along Edison Eastman, they put in a temporary pole, which is smaller pole to the west side. And then they will transfer the power line to the temporary pole, which is what they're doing now. And then they will build a new tower. And then transfer the power line back and then remove the old one.
So the...
The old ones out till the end?
Right.
What's that?
So they don't take the old towers out till they're done?
And then, and then remove the temporary pole.
So the old towers are coming out entirely?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay, thank you. I second the consent calendar.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor Pretend, on that last item, the tree trimming maintenance services agreement, it looks like the exhibit there may not be the correct one. Makes reference to another city.
Yes, we have piggybacks.
Okay.
We have piggyback, I'm sorry.
All right. Then, I would ask that you approve that subject to city attorney's review and approval along with risk manager. It just came up that another city I work with was dealing with the same company on their agreement. And there were some changes being made to the insurance requirements and the indemnity provisions based upon some litigation in a different city that led to a very large claim. So, I'd like to have an opportunity to review this with the city manager as risk management and make those modifications with the council's approval.
Okay, I'll make my motion to approve the demands register and reflect concerns by city attorney as it relates to item number seven to ensure that staff look over the agreement, ensuring that it complies with all of his legal concerns. Does that sound good?
I'll concur.
Okay.
With a question on number eight. Water meters, where are we at with that?
As, no, it's completion, as we completed this contract.
So, everybody has a new water meter?
No, sir, this is for, this is, we hired this company to help us with the larger meter for the commercial. So, next fiscal year...
So we have all, we have the new meters for houses?
Not all the houses yet, but next fiscal year, the one that you already approved.
Yeah.
My co's have it done next fiscal year, sir.
Okay.
And you already approved the budget for the meters.
I appreciate you starting with my house.
And my house too.
My water bill accelerated, but anyway, that's okay.
Any other discussion on the consent calendar? Okay, there's a motion in a second, including directing the city attorney for further review of number seven. Any other discussion? If not, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Oh, I said aye too. No old business, no new business? Are there any reports of councilmen?
I'll just make a general announcement. There's going to be an exciting event happening at our airport on July the 7th. And I'm going to just kind of read the little synapses of it, kind of encapsulates exactly what I want to announce. But I guess it's going to be a stunt jump that's actually going to be used, be performed at our airport. And it's sponsored by the History Channel, so it's actually going to be televised live. So the public has an opportunity to attend and buy tickets for the event. But basically, the event regards, is revolving around Travis Pastrama who made history...
What is a stunt jump?
Well, I'm going to describe it right now.
Councilman Papeski is going to do a stunt jump?
No, no, I will be in the audience. Travis Pastrama made history reenacting three of Evel Knievel's most legendary stunts. This summer, Travis will host a moto phenomenon with phenomenons Alex Hodges and Vicky Golden attempt, which will attempt three more record-breaking legendary stunts with a higher degree of difficulty than even Pastrama himself would attempt. Vicky will be the first woman to attempt to break the firewall record riding at a high speed through a series of flamy wooden boards. The current record was set in 2006. Axel will look to break two records. First, he'll attempt to jump over more than twenty-four beverage trucks to best Evel Knievel's 1971 attempt and Robbie Knievel's 2003 record. Then he'll attempt to jump further than anyone has ever on a motorcycle, a distance that was set in 2011 at 379 feet and nine inches. So some exciting stunts happening at our airport before we get commercial service. And it's on July the 7th.
It's a good thing we're real close to the Medical Center.
Yeah.
Any others?
So, for anyone who may be interested, there is a website you can buy tickets at, it's called Nitro Circus. But you can also, there's more information at our website for the airport as well.
Any information on the, what the...
Airshow.
Airshow, thank you.
Yeah, they're working on doing the planning right now. I wish I had the exact date.
Because the airshow is great.
Yes, and they're going to continue it this year. I want to say it's the end of October?
No, I think it's in, I think they pushed it into November.
Okay, November.
I don't remember either, but I remember them talking about it.
But yes, well, the airshow will continue and yeah, it was a success last year and...
Yeah, that's a great event. I don't know about this one, but the airshow's a great event.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Any reports of officers? If not, we will adjourn to a date certain, July 9, 2019, in the city council and open the housing authority agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
No scheduled items. We have our consent calendar.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No. No new business, no chair and member reports, no reports of officers. Okay, we'll adjourn that to the same time of July 9, I believe. And then we'll go to the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to speak? Consent calendar.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the consent calendar? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Carried? And we will then adjourn to July 9.
And I do, I did confirm the airshow's November 2nd and 3rd.
Good.
This year.
Thank you. Let the record show, when the mayor's out of town, the city council agenda moves forthright and...
Alacrity. I was just going to, I don't know where he is in Europe, but in case he's watching, I was going to make the comment that he doesn't need broadband access wherever he is. He can watch the city council in 3G or whatever and still have time to go do a pub crawl or something.
That's right.
Anyway, thank you all for coming out. Have a good evening. Enjoy the farmer's market.